I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of July 21, 2020. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Cordero, Councilmember Moltz, Councilmember Soto, Councilmember Waterfield, and Mayor Patino.
Here. So, the first item on the agenda is a presentation. Mr. Posada, good evening.
The Mayor's Team Council is made up of students from Santa Maria and Pioneer Valley High School. They are usually active during the entire school year, meeting on a regular basis with the mayor and with our staff to put together programs and services. So what I'd like to do real quickly is recap kind of what they've been up to. Maybe? I don't know. Thank you, Beth. So tonight, we're recommending that the council recognize the 14 graduating seniors in appreciation for their civic engagement and dedicated contributions to the City of Santa Maria through their participation in the Mayor's Team Task Force. Some of the projects that the teens have been involved in, they were substantially responsible for the distribution of 1,100 bus passes for students last summer. That helped get the kids around town to different venues. They also worked on developing a Safe Streets Plan, which was a student-driven plan that we're going to be presenting to the Public Works Department. These are routes that the students typically take from their homes to schools and other important venues, trying to identify safe routes for the youth to use along the way. One of the components of this program that we're still working on is trying to work with neighborhoods to, excuse me, to solicit volunteers to be those vetted, safe homes along the route. If a child needs some help, that those homes would be identified along the way with some kind of signage that would indicate that that's a Safe Streets home. So the expansion of teen programming was something else that they were involved in. The Mayor's Team Council ideas have been applied towards expanding our programming in the neighborhoods. Teens without transportation to the youth center can still receive recreation services through what we're calling pop-ups. The staff and our teen volunteers would go out to community parks, bring out all the equipment and all the information that we had, and engage the youth that were in the area. These were pretty popular in the sense that they were all done via social media. So all the public relations were really focused on children and youth in a particular area of the city. We did a number of those at low-income complexes, such as the Westgate Courtyards, and some of our non-traditional parks around the city that are really retention basins, but we kind of did certain, we did activities there because the youth felt that those were locations that we didn't have a park facility available. The other component of this was civic engagement. We organized different tours aboard the youth tools that were interested in visiting. So in these particular examples, I visited the police and fire department. And the idea was, again, to build relationships with these agencies that typically you don't see unless it's kind of an emergency situation, one way or the other. The youth learned more about municipal functions. They learned to work with one another, and they also learned to work with the staff that were working in these particular departments. So in recognition for their service and for their participation, we organized a trip up to the Bay Area to visit some of the universities and museums. My alma mater is Anza Estates on the left. Mayor, I think you're a Spartan also, so very happy to get there. And then Cal Berkeley over on the right in the pictures. It was a quick trip. I think we were gone for three days, total days, but it was really, you know, driving up and driving around and coming back. So the youth really enjoyed it, a lot of positive feedback from those that attended. As I recall, the weather didn't cooperate with us very much. Was it the weather?
The weather was so okay when we got there. It was the day before that 101 became flooded up there by Gonzales. Yeah.
So, but they persevered and they had a really good trip. So off to the graduating seniors. So we're really happy and proud for our seniors. They had, this was a really difficult year to graduate in, as we all know. Everybody had to go through modified graduation ceremonies. But we do want to take a second to recognize our students that graduated this year. I'd like to start just by naming the, going down the roster and naming the individuals. We had Alberto Dominguez, Alondra Arias, Danny Morales, and Danny will be going to Cal State Fullerton, Emily Espinosa, Isabella Rosas, and she'll be attending Hancock College, Jennifer Martinez, Josef Lisa Garcia Cruz, Kylie Anaya, she's attending Fullerton College of Cosmetology and Psychology. Lisa Guzman Calderon, she'll be attending Hancock College, and she's going to be focusing on theater. Natalie Areola, she's a Cal Poly via the Hancock Business Administration Program. Wendy Reyna, Yasmin Persiado Segura, and, what's the, Yamis, this is a tough one, Yamis Cel, Cecelina Baez Gil. These are some of our students that are participating, or participated this past year. We're really happy to have had them. They were good leaders. They organized these trips and gave staff a lot of input on how things should go in our outreach to youth. The main goal was to get them involved in the community and to learn more about the city and its operations. A name that's not on here, and I'll take the opportunity, is Alice Patino. The mayor took a lot of time in getting these trips organized. Also, I'd like to thank Diana Reed and Tony Lane in the City Manager's Office for working on a lot of details associated with these trips. And of course, the staff at the Recreation and Parks Department, David Rodriguez in particular, spent a lot of time organizing and getting these things going. So Mayor, on behalf of these youth, I would like to thank you and the council for supporting the task force goals, and we look forward to doing more, virtually apparently, will be the way we do things from now on. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Posada. And I really want to thank all the council for being very supportive on this. The whole focus is to make sure that these young men and women participate in leadership and get to know what the city is like and to become leaders in our city. So many of them didn't know, you know, and I asked them, "What do you want to do?" And they said they would like to go out to the police department. That was one place that they really wanted to go. And so we were able to visit a lot of the different departments in the city because they have not been exposed to what city government is even about, you know? And so that was really important. I know that Mr. Cordero put together the fishing trip, deep-sea fishing trip, and it was really important for me to get the kids exposed to a lot of things. And so the deep-sea fishing trip, I thought, was great. And I said, "I can't go because I would get seasick. I get seasick, and I know that." But they were really good sports, and one girl did come back, she said she got really seasick. So she said she wouldn't go again on that, but she says she's glad she went. So anyway, it was a real fun group. We went to San Jose State, we went to Santa Clara, and we went to Stanford. I wish I'd given you some of the pictures that I had taken with the girls, but they were very excited, and they were amazed when they would see the homeless shelters along the road, like in San Francisco area, and when we were traveling up there. So anyway, a good time. It's just, it's so disappointing when you can't be with the kids all the time, because we were meeting monthly, sometimes bimonthly. And it's really disappointing when you can't meet with them and do things with them. But anyway, I want to thank all the council for your support on this. It's very important. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Madam Clerk, could you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the printed agenda this evening. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. And I believe Mr. McNeely is on the line with us.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I have a suggestion for the council in the way to begin the council meeting. Instead of an invocation, I suggest to the council silent prayer, that everyone, in their own way, whether they be in the council chamber, or at home on Zoom, or hopefully in the council chamber with you in the future, has a moment of silent prayer to pray in their own way. And this could be followed by a poem or a song by a young person from Santa Maria to set the tone for the meeting. I go back now to the Puritans who came from England to escape a religion that they did not believe in. A governor was in control, a king, and a parliament, and they came to America. But when they came to America, they imposed their religion and their religious beliefs on the Native Americans, doing what had been done to them in their own country. The founding fathers of our country believed in a separation of church and state, and that there would be no state religion. In Santa Maria, we have Buddhists and Jews, we have Muslims and Hindus, we have Native Americans, we have people of their own personal beliefs. Now, it is true that perhaps a majority of people in Santa Maria are Christians, but is it right for Christians to impose their form of prayer on the minority? It was not correct in England. It was not correct when the Puritans imposed their religion on the Native Americans. And I believe the Christian prayer does not represent all of Santa Maria. Because of that, and because the council is on record as saying that they want to represent all the people of Santa Maria, I believe silent prayer is the most appropriate kind of prayer, because it affends no one, it represents everyone. It's equal under the law. And I believe that from now on, we should begin our council meetings with silent prayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
We may have one more speaker. Mr. Solomon, would you like to speak now, or did you want to wait until item 4A?
I should speak now if you'd like.
Sure, you're welcome to.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Cliff Solomon, and I am alarmed about continuing increase of confirmed cases of COVID-19 in Santa Maria, especially among our agricultural workers. As of yesterday, the Santa Barbara County Public Health Department is reporting 3,892 confirmed cases of COVID-19, 45% of whom are Latino Hispanic. Having attended the last council meeting virtually, I'm aware that both the city and county are working to enforce COVID-19 health codes, but efforts don't seem to be working. Why didn't it take the death of Leo Chavez to start a serious investigation into the working and living conditions for H2A workers? While investigating, investigation is a step in the right direction, Mark Van de Kamp was quoted in today's Santa Maria Times as stating that while some H2A residential homes have been inspected, partially converted motel sites have not been inspected because the city doesn't even know where these are unless the growers reveal this information. Surely, in the midst of a pandemic, this information can be made available to the city by the growers. I've heard that the city has established task forces, primarily staffed by city employees, to investigate the pandemic issues. Again, it's a good step, but I would encourage the city to broaden the participants in this effort to include nonprofits who are already engaged in serving the needs of residents, who understand how to distribute up-to-date information in languages that are linguistically and culturally appropriate. And in order for the task force to be more transparent and accountable to the residents of Santa Maria, I suggest this council member Soto be on. First of all, her district has the highest number of cases in the city. Second, she is bilingual. And thirdly, she is very visible and accessible to her constituents and trusted by them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Solomon.
That's all we have.
That's it. Okay, if you'll notice each half, this that says "mic" is on, and when you're not speaking, then just turn your mic off. Thank you. Before we move on, Mr. Stowell, did you have any comments you wanted to make? Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
The following routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on request of council members.
Does anyone have items they wish to pull for discussion?
No, Madam Mayor, and if there isn't, I'd like to make a recommendation to adopt the consent calendar or something.
Okay. Having her motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield.
Aye.
Councilmember Moltz.
Aye.
Councilmember Soto.
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino.
Aye. So next, we have a presentation. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive an update regarding the coronavirus situation.
And City Manager, Director of Emergency Services, Mr. Stowell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Our update tonight will focus on three areas. One, updating of the statistics of where we are with the pandemic as it impacts the City of Santa Maria. Second, update on our community outreach team, the task force, and then third, how we're supporting our businesses with outreach and information exchange. And Todd Tugel, Chief Tugel, will be here with the data shortly, but I can start off by explaining the community outreach team as, that has stood up. We've had three meetings of the coordination effort. It's including our fire, risk management, emergency management, code enforcement, media outreach, mapping, and chamber partners. We, the primary effort here is, at this point, trying to get a better flow of information exchange. We heard at the last city council meeting that the county asked for help by the city to provide outreach information in supporting enforcement of the public health orders. And so we are here to help, but we indicated to county that we need better health analysis and health information in order to be effective in doing so. In specific, we've asked, make sure that we get consistent information to our dispatchers so when they're dispatching our employees, we understand what the COVID risk is to the address being dispatched, that we understand the community breakdown of the COVID cases so we can identify where we can be most effective in our outreach and our efforts. We've heard a lot about the demographics and focusing on certain segments of the demographics. We want to have consistent information on who in our community is getting COVID and how we can address those particular populations. We are seeking more information on complaint analysis. So as the county mentioned at the last meeting, the complaints can be submitted to the county. For the most part, they just send them to code enforcement for us to enforce. And a couple of things that would help for us that we've mentioned to the county and that this, would make this task force more effective would be for us to understand what the public health risks are of these complaints. There's a variety of complaints. If they can provide some initial triage analysis of it, of, these are top complaints we really need to address, and these are other complaints that we should be addressing, then it'll allow us to prioritize our staffing as well. And also, we want to make sure we're consistent following the county health order here with the rest of the county. We hear that the county sheriff does a certain level of enforcement. Cities on the South Coast do a different level of enforcement. It is the same public health order. We want to at least understand what a consistent outreach approach would be. So we're not asking public health to come out and, you know, be the boots on the ground necessarily. We're happy to help and augment that. We have asked for them to be members of the team. They have offered staffing to the team as well. It's the boots-on-the-ground folks who are with environmental health who know our community. We want to further expand that out to public health experts, Marion Hospital, and to mapping folks from the county as well. Just to be able to understand, we're happy to do the work, but we're not the experts on health and the health analysis. So that value add would be really important for us to be effective as we're reaching out to our businesses and community. The other big part of the task force is educational outreach. We are encouraging people in our community to take precautions and also letting them know what to do if they are infected or have symptoms. We have reached out to Emerald Wave Media, American General Media, which comprise many of the local English and Spanish radio stations in the city for them, and they are willing to be able to help us with the outreach. We'll use the city's social media platforms, and we've also reached out to the State Department of Social Services regarding the congregant care facilities. As the county mentioned at the last meeting, those are separately regulated, and so we, again, want to understand their quarantine requirements and ensure compliance with the fire code. We, you know, when there is an issue in those facilities, they dial 911 like anyone else, and our emergency responders go there. So we want to make sure we're, again, coordinated and safe with our approaches there. And then finally, and I could segue to Mr. Morris, is we are assisting our businesses with building code, fire code, and code enforcement, municipal code enforcement staff to help up the businesses, whether, help the businesses mitigate, whether it's moving outdoors, putting up tents and compliance with the rules. And one thing we're, two things we're seeing, one is businesses don't understand the rules like we've all seen. They change really weekly basis, and there may be a plan for a certain change coming down the line, and it may end up being something different before it gets down the line. And the other side of it is businesses realize, they don't necessarily realize there's this structure in place of guidelines and a reopening plan and mitigation efforts and self-certifications. And for us to be able to go out to the businesses and apprise them of that, what we're seeing is, you know, one business understands that, goes through the process. The other business says, "Hey, they're open, I'll be open too." And for us to be able to reach out and inform them of what the reopening means, how to do it safely, how to make sure their employees are safe, their customers are safe, and what to do if they do have symptomatic patients or customers, and ways to mitigate that. And so I think we can turn it over to Glenn, who can give an update on the business impacts, how we're working to support them. We understand they're in a difficult environment. We've seen businesses closed and allowed to reopen and closed again, and, you know, we're hearing that it's difficult on the employees, difficult on trying to run a business, difficult to invest in the community and in their work. And so we want to be sure to help them be able to manage this moving environment and do so in a safe way, which allows their employees and our residents and their customers to be able to avoid contaminating themselves with the virus.
Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, Mr. Stowell. You know, one of the, for the last, I don't know, 90, 100, some odd days, time draws, right? We have really been trying to, our primary focus has really been on educating the businesses and making sure that they understood both the environment in which they can operate as well as the resources that are available to help them in operating successfully. And we're continuing to do that kind of work and really trying to encourage best practices. So as we get information about businesses that are going through the attestation process with the county, we have an outreach that we do to those businesses as we get calls, like I'm sure your code enforcement folks do over the weekend. Usually, our voicemails load up over the weekend with people who have suggestions about how things could be done better in the community, and we try to follow up with those businesses and help them understand, you know, what they can and can't do. You know, there's been some discussion about the need to coordinate better with the county. I will give them some kudos, you know, as they decided to really ramp up their messaging around the wearing of face masks. We were encouraged that they reached out and asked to participate in our Respect Protect Campaign that the city, Marion, and the chamber, and the community college launched about two months ago. Rather than creating yet another campaign with different messaging, the county just jumped in and has encouraged the South County cities to do the same. So I thought that was a good step in the right direction in terms of coordinating. As we look to the inevitable need to rebuild our businesses and our local economy, we've really put, we've put a plan together that includes four different aspects, and I wanted to give you a quick update on three of those this evening. The first is the need to get good data to really understand what's happening on the ground in the community and use that to guide everything else we're doing. So we completed our first, what will be monthly survey of businesses, and I'll share some of those results with you in just a moment. The second is we are preparing a public awareness campaign that really has a couple of different objectives, and we'll talk about that. I'll show you some previews of some of the collateral that's coming out on that. The third is the establishment of a volunteer advisor committee. I'm calling them our business triage team. These are individuals who are semi-retired or recently retired, successful business owners or operators who have agreed on a volunteer basis, as we get businesses that call us and say, "I need help. I don't know where to go," that these folks will go in and do an initial assessment, help them identify what's their primary first need, and then we'll work with them to connect them to a resource that can, that can support them in that need. And then the fourth piece, and this will come a little later, is education around really just how to more effectively operate a business in the community. And that will be kind of the last piece that we bring forward. And so, quick highlights from our survey that we just got back from our folks, and we asked them, "What are the, what are the impacts? How has COVID-19 impacted your business?" I don't think any of these are terribly surprising, but the number on impact has been the increased costs of mitigating, which I think is a little bit of an encouraging sign because what that tells me is businesses are spending the money to do it right. They're buying the plexiglass, they're, you know, ordering the sanitizer, they're getting the masks and those kinds of things. They're now moving outdoors and renting tents and awnings to be able to continue to do their business carefully and safely. You know, we kind of hit the top five. I think there were probably 15 or so choices that we gave folks. These were the ones that were most popular. I was encouraged also to see that in that top five was not sending all my people home or furloughing or laying them off. It was on the list, but it wasn't in the top five. If you're curious, it was number seven. So, you know, it is happening, but again, I think this is a sign that our businesses are trying to stay the course and be ready when the pandemic is under more control and we can reopen more fully. So we have to go back to revenue, and this is where it gets a little concerning, and I think this one's evident, of the impacts of the open-close mentality, you know, approach that we've been taking with our economy. 53% of our respondents said that their revenue had gone down at least 25% in the last 30 days. So this is not since this thing started, but in that last 30 days. And again, if you'll think about that 30 days, that's when we started to reopen and then went back down. Twenty-three percent said that they had lost at least 75% of their revenue in that 30-day window. So that's the, that's the concerning piece long-term is how long can they continue to sustain in that kind of an environment? We asked, what do you need? What do you need? And, you know, cash flow and revenue is number one. So we're continuing to try to help businesses connect to the federal programs. There is still money in the PPP program. You know, they can continue to work with their local bankers to secure those loans. The rules continue to change. The IRS continues to put out new guidance, but there are funds available. We are also working with city staff and the Santa Barbara Foundation on a potential grant program that we hope to roll out next month that will provide small, modest assistance to really very small businesses in our community. And again, we hope to have those details ready to share with you early in August.
What foundation is that about?
I'm sorry?
What foundation?
So the Santa Barbara Foundation is the lead in organizing the program. You may have read some media coverage, they just agreed on a program with the city of Guley. That was their first one. They then came and reached out to us about North County, and we were working with them, partnering with your staff, but also the staff in Guadalupe and in the fourth district's supervisor's office around the city, around the community of Orford. You know, Santa Maria's are by nature a bit of an optimistic folk, but there is some caution there. So 54%, just over half of our folks said that for them, their business today is okay, and they expect it will get better over the next six months. So that's encouraging. That means that they have some hope that they'll, that this is going to turn a corner quickly and they'll be able to sustain and move forward. When they broaden that lens a little bit and we ask them about the regional economy, there's a little less of it, right? So almost three-quarters said that they really don't have a good handle on what they think our regional economy is going to look like as we move forward. So those are some highlights. Again, we're going to do this survey monthly, and we'll continue to update that. And as those of you that work with survey data understand, that over time, the numbers themselves are not the important pieces, the trends, right? And what we hope to see is that those trends move in the direction of optimism and success and away from concern and risk, right? We mentioned that we were going to run a campaign, we're calling it internally the Support Santa Maria Valley campaign. There are four objectives for this campaign. One is to build confidence in our local consumers, that they can trust the businesses that have reopened properly and gone through the attestation process, that they can feel confident in doing business with them. The second objective is to remind them about why local businesses are important to them, to their community, to their families. The third is to increase economic activity. We need to get folks out there shopping and spending money locally, and we probably all need to unwind some bad habits we've gotten into of clicking to buy, right? So it's time to go back to our local stores first and use the internet when there's no other alternatives. So that's the third. And then the fourth is to encourage positive individual ads, right? So there will be a component of this. If you look at the bottom of the signs, there's some subtle messaging in there about where you ask, separate from each other, wash your hands, right? So that's the way, what we as individuals can do to support these businesses in addition to buy a program. So these are some samples of some ads that will be coming out. The campaign will include radio, television, and a lot of digital platforms. We intend to run this campaign through the end of the calendar year, so this is an investment that we're making that will last for some time. There's a couple of other kind of how they will play out in more of a digital form. And as you can see, these will be in both English and Spanish as they continue to build out. Our hope, we're trying to get these all finished up here in the next week or so, and the intent is to launch the campaign the first week of August. So with that, the third piece in the file that I wanted to touch on today, again, is this triage team. There is a form available on our website, you can see the address there. As you interact with local businesses, if they just are at a point where they don't know what to do next, if they've kind of, you know, run through their own options list and they need help, we have help available. And the best way to get that started is to go to the website, fill out this quick little form. It is confidential. We will send out one or two of our volunteer advisors who will meet with them one-on-one, help them identify what is the first step they can take to rebuild their business. And then we will, we will work with that advisory, the local business, to connect them to the right resource, whether that's a public agency, whether that's an organization like the Small Business Development Center, whether it's a financial resource, wherever they need to go, that's where we're going to try to get them. We don't profess to be the answer, we don't own those answers, but we own the rolodex that can help find them. So we would encourage all businesses out there that needs to forward assistance to reach out through the Chamber, and we would encourage you, as you are as public figures, and have those conversations with local businesses, and they're asking, where do I turn? Who can help me? Point them to us, and we'll make sure they get connected. With that, Mayor, are you happy to answer any questions or turn it back over to the city attorney?
Any questions of Mr. Morris? Ms. Soto?
Yes, my question is to both Mr. Morris and our city manager and city attorney. I've been receiving emails, again, of either businesses not continuing on with their safety protocols. Like this week, I received an email from a resident who was concerned about the Vons grocery store, saying how they've got, they've removed some of like the social distancing signage. And so my question is, as some of the businesses are being more lenient and we're seeing the rise of COVID cases, what are we able to do to ensure the safety of residents, but the employees, the employees as well?
I guess I'll respond to that. With respect to elements such as that, you know, my office regularly has both referrals from public health as well as items we receive from the website, telephone calls. We average between 100 and 200 regular reports on a weekly basis. So we first start with an initial investigation to do a drive-by, see whether or not what the reporting party has said is accurate. And then we try and educate to provide the best practices by way of example with respect to the Vons. I got that report Monday or Sunday night. I drove there Monday morning and identified that on a corporate basis, they made a determination to have consistent activity at all of their locations, and the one here actually had more than other stores. So they, as a corporate, made a determination to have them consistent. I did see signage on masking, I did see masks on patrons, I did see social media signs. So we do that. So we triage it with respect to, is it accurate? If it's accurate, then is there additional education needed? So we make contact with managers, we make contact with principals in charge, and identify, first of all, are they aware of it? If they're aware of it, how can we help? And we will, again, refer them to Chamber, we refer them to other resources. And then the last part of your question is, how do we protect employees? We technically don't, because again, what we are trying to do as a code is protect the public at large. And we are endeavoring to provide management who is, has a vested interest in the health and safety of their employees with the tools that we have available. If we see something egregious that would require additional enforcement tools, we have other resources. By way of example, with respect to alcohol-based organizations, bars, restaurants, we have public health, we have ABC. We utilize licensure agencies because they have more of a stick than a simple code element. But we do what we can to try and provide the health and safety to all of our community members. Again, using five officers on 200-plus cases a week, we're quite busy. But I do know we've sent a lot of folks to the Chamber. The other thing, and I have to put this out to the public, the difficulty that we have is the rules are changing quite rapidly. Many people in our business community, especially in our Hispanic business community, have not heard the word attestation, nor do they understand what it is. What they've heard is their type of business can be open. And so therefore, they come forward and they open. That doesn't necessarily mean they have an effective safety plan or even a safety plan that meets with the guidelines, and we try and assist them with that, both English, Spanish, and other languages to the extent we can, so that they can have the tools. Because again, they have a vested interest in their staying open and in protecting their employees. So that's, that's how we do it.
Ms. Soto, if I could just add two quick points to that. One, we've just completed a grant application with the code enforcement team. They're the lead on it, we forwarded that application specifically designed for outreach and education. So it would help us, you know, ramp up the materials that we can pass around to folks, all, you know, the educational tools. So that's in the works as well. The other point that I think I would make, not specifically for you, but for the listening audience, the best thing that people can do who are concerned about the health of employees is take personal responsibility and wear a mask when they enter the business. Often what we're finding is that the businesses that are pulling back are doing so because they feel like that's what they need to do to protect their employees from abuse and from, you know, folks that are frankly just rude and are attacking these employees. And so, you know, the key message I would give to folks is if you're concerned about those people, put your mask on and be polite.
A follow-up question, if I may.
Go ahead.
Is have we been able to figure out how we're going to enforce the health, the public health officer's policies? Have we heard from public health as to what means, what we can do to help enforce those policies other than just educate?
Well, again, we have tools. One of the tools, the best tool we have is when an attestation is filled out, that then is consent to a public health order. And therefore, we can then utilize that if they're violating that, because we can ask, do you have your attestation? Do you have your safety plan? Are you following it? And we can use enforcement tools under the public health order. My division cannot because it's enforceable through law enforcement. But again, we have thus far not found any specific business to be unwilling to be corrected. We've had a lot that are unable to based on finances, based on physical structures, and they've modified or changed their behavior. We had an example of a restaurant that put up a tent so that they could have outside dining, and then enclosed it with four walls, which made it a building. So when they were educated that, no, the purpose is to have airflow through, then they immediately fixed that and were within compliance. And that's typically, it really is a trying to follow very changing, rapidly changing, and sometimes contradictory rules that we're finding that we can assist them with. If we found an organization that was intentionally acting in a way that either was going to harm the public or harm their employees, we would gather all the tools and not just rely on code enforcement, but we would gather a public health officer ourselves, a law enforcement officer, and solve that problem. We thus far have not had to bring in the big guns, but we have that capability.
Any other questions? I know that when I receive any of these complaints, I immediately forward them to our city manager and our city attorney, and I've got that one. It's interesting how some of these stores implement the guidelines. And I go around to different ones because I want to see what's going on. And I know at the Vons, they were blocking off one door, you could only go in one door, and you could only go out, go out another door. And so it was almost like with the guidelines, it was overkill of the guidelines. I don't know that you could overkill this actually, but, but, you know, I mean, you know what the guidelines were, and then you'd go to another grocery store, and it seemed much more lax. But they were putting the social distancing. Some stores will remind people, you'll hear it over the speakers, and some stores don't. So it's, like you said, Mr. Morris, each one of us have, has that responsibility to pay attention to what we're doing, and it's really, you know, it's difficult. And I know the checkers in these stores don't like to say anything because they don't want to see the wrath of God coming down on them. I had someone tell me about two young girls that work, I think it was at Trader Joe's, and the line out there is every six feet. And someone came by in a car and was very abusive with these girls because they worked there, and he was never going to shop there again because of this. And I, you know, some of the ugliness is coming out in people with all this going on, but we'll make, we'll make it through. Yes, Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one other question. We all heard about the COVID-19 outbreak at an H2A contractor. And my question is, I know that at the last city council meeting, one of the things that I suggested were to, for the community development department to see if we would be able to work something through the over-the-counter permits to ensure that they are, again, protecting the safety, not protecting the safety and welfare of their employees, but making sure that they are concurrent with the public health guidelines. And so I'm wondering if there's been any move on that?
Tom started answering that, but, so it's the interface we have between public health, regulation of employees, and regulation of the health order. And so from our, from our point of view with regulating the housing, we haven't had a housing permit issued for H2A at this point that has required any modifications or clarifications to that, to the COVID mitigations. And I don't know if Tom could talk more about that particular case or similar ones to that.
I can tell you that we have, again, my team, I'm just going to tell you, are amazing. They work really hard, and they heard that, and they reached out, and they immediately contacted the ag commissioner, and they've been working, again, outside of their normal scope to try and get additional resources. So they even, you know, are starting to contact the folks who were at the H2A, you know, who are supporting and promoting the H2A program here in Santa Maria and saying, you know, we need to reach out to you so you can reach to your growers and make sure that they're getting educated. So we're doing that. You know, it's, every tragedy is difficult right now, but we're looking at 107,000 people and doing what we can to protect all of them. And so that is another way, is we're reaching out, again, proactively, to other departments, to other resources that aren't in the COVID fight, and trying to get them engaged to help us get that education to the fields, get that education to their employees and to the housing. So we're working on that.
But at this point, it doesn't sound like we are working on revising the over-the-counter permit for H2A to ensure that they are, that the housing where they're being housed, where the workers are being housed, is concurrent with the public health guidelines?
If, if the, again, the structure that the council determined and the ordinance did not incorporate commercial elements, so this goes back to an education as opposed to an enforcement element, and most of the public health officer determinations do not incorporate housing as a specific health officer order. So we don't have any teeth to do that. What we can, what we can do is to educate, because the public health officer has not mandated certain elements in housing. They've not said you cannot have, you know... in housing. They've not said you cannot have, you know, four people in a house, four people in an H2A facility, or 16 people in a single-family residence. We don't have that tool. The public health order has not addressed it, but we are trying to address it through education proactively. So there wouldn't be a reason for us to revise the license, because it's neither licensed under the health order, nor is it licensed under our H2A program.
And Madam Mayor, going-
Yes, Mr. Stowell.
Going back to your earlier point about the business and the different mitigations we're seeing from the businesses, and following up on Mr. Morris's point about the employees, we heard on our legislative call last week, and we've heard from our police department, that many of the calls that we get from law enforcement are not so much to help enforce a health order, but to help to enforce the safety of the business or of the employees. We heard the sheriff last Thursday talk about calls they've received, the sheriff's department from employers, businesses, saying, we have a person in here who is violating the health order, or, you know, is disregarding our mitigation efforts. And we've heard that the law enforcement in those cases come to enforce the trespassing and property rights of the business to have the right to be able to refuse service to anyone. And even on those cases, we haven't seen where it's required severe enforcement action, or arresting anyone, or issuing citations. It's just another education effort. But I think you said the education takes a different form when the police show up and tell the guy to knock it off. So, yeah, it is a balance on all sides here, with both enforcing a health order and enforcing the business's ability to keep their employees safe and try to run the business.
And property rights.
And property rights. And as we continue to discuss, we can continue the presentation with Chief Tuggle, who has an update on where we are in Santa Maria with our, with the COVID statistics, and where we are both in the community and with the city.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'm Todd Tuggle, Deputy Chief for our department. So we'll just go through some of the statistics, and we'll get into Santa Maria specifically. The city manager asked a couple of the ones related to watch lists and some of the metrics that aren't going particularly well. So as of today, there are 5,124 cases in the county. That's the total number of cases.
Five thousand.
City of Santa Maria, 2,265 of those cases. 66 new cases in the city of Santa Maria today. There was a slight blip on 7/19. Most likely, that was a reporting error at the county. It was a Friday, or excuse me, a Sunday. So that was probably one of their reporting errors. Daily new cases, 2.7%. So the weekly increase is 19%. To kind of piggyback on what Mr. Morris was saying earlier in regards to trends, earlier in the month, we're at a 29% increase over, week-over-week increase. Just a week ago, we were at 21%. So it looks like the trends are going down, but I would caution and say the trends were actually dropping off significantly until about the 14th month. Countywide, it looks like the prison has pretty well stabilized. They've been at about 1,000 cases for the better part of about six weeks now. One of the cases, or one of the metrics that's being looked at is the past two weeks, so basically a 14-day rolling average. So on the 14th of July, that rolling average was, or that rolling case total, I should say, was 867 cases. So in the previous 14 days, there have been 867 cases. That jumped to 874 cases the next day.
That's how long?
That's just us. And then as of today, that number is down to 795. So in the last 14 days, we've had 795 cases. So what that does show is that hopefully, we are working our way towards a downward trend. But as I said, maybe caution, we had one of these a few weeks ago, and we saw that spike jump right back up. We still are seeing cases in the skilled nursing facilities, the care facilities, not just skilled nursing, but the care facilities in general. And I'll speak to an issue with that, and it kind of ties in with what Swatson was saying earlier, with regard to businesses, the care facilities are doing their best to comply with the health order. And some cases, they're required, well, in all those cases, they're required to quarantine patients coming into the facility. So what they've done is tried to set up makeshift facilities, in some cases, putting plastic sheeting on walls, things like that. So we are constantly finding new cases where, again, like Swatson said, they're violating a building code or a fire code, and so we're coming in and offering that educational piece to say that we understand what you're doing, and we offer some advice, and maybe try this instead of that. Everybody's been very compliant with that so far. And the most recent case was at 1405 East Main Street. They were using the fourth floor as a quarantine area, and so we're offering that help to them. Hospitalizations is another metric that's being looked at thus far. The county as a whole has been looking fairly good. And then the metrics that we're not doing so well on as a county, but I think it's fairly obvious to say that Santa Maria contributes to this, is the positive testing rate in the past seven days. So the metric that's used by the state is an 8% positive testing rate over the last seven days. The county as a whole has been well over 10 for going all the way back to, well, back to the 15th, which is that dip that I spoke of earlier. Right now, we were at 12.1% a few days ago, down to 10.4%. So again, that trajectory is looking positive in the sense that it's going down. However, it's not where we need it to be just yet. Testing rates seem to be fairly good. The metric is 1.5 per thousand. The county as a whole is well over two, and has been over three at certain points. So testing sometimes can be difficult to get a hold of, or difficult to schedule. However, based on the metrics, the county is succeeding at that. So one of the things that I did want to mention is that we did reach out to the county public health, in the task force that Stowell mentioned earlier. Thus far, the response on the data and the analysis, we have not received anything with regards to any deeper analysis than what we can all get on the Santa Barbara County Public Health webpage. So we have reached out to them, and that was two weeks ago. And thus far, we have received nothing in terms of tangible data or analysis to help guide our efforts for the task force. We did reinstitute some data sharing on the emergency response side, which we were getting early on, which helps protect our emergency responders by alerting them that there may be, or there has been a positive case in the past. So our folks have that awareness going into a scene to not only treat the patient accordingly, but also to add a concern in dealing with the family and the potential spread there. So that pretty well concludes the presentation on the statistics that I have, and how it relates to Santa Maria.
Ms. Warren.
What about the recovery rates? How fast are we recovering from COVID?
In terms of individual recoveries, or?
Well, just as you've given us rates of, you know, the county of Santa Barbara is 5124, Santa Maria is 2265. Out of those, you know, what are those numbers coming down to?
So what are the numbers, I think if I understand you right, ma'am, one of the numbers you're looking for is the active cases. So that would kind of by implication, the rest of those would be recovery cases. Yeah. So total cases, active cases right now is 295 in the city. And 400, oh, excuse me, that's for the county. I'm sorry. We didn't have that many cases in total in the last few years. I'm sorry, that was 295 in the county, active cases. And at the peak, or at one of the peaks recently, it was 414 active cases. So yes, there are a significant amount recovering. And to your point, 4,797 have recovered.
Yeah. That's the number we're missing. People are, you know, listening. Yeah.
That is correct.
Just because that is good news right there.
That is correct, yes.
Absolutely. No. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Moats.
Yes. How about the death rate? How many people actually dying? And the second question is, where are all these tests being performed? I know we have the free testing out by the fairgrounds, but does that also include all the tests that are done with every admission to the hospital and in private doctors' offices?
Honestly, I don't have the answer to that question. The first part of the question, sir, was the basically mortality rate. I don't have that specific number. The number of fatalities is, double check, 32. So they're listing the death rate at 1%, or mortality rate at 1%. Regarding testing, obviously, the metrics show that the testing rates are adequate in terms of per thousand people, or per thousand population. So, but anecdotally, tests are very hard to come by. We had to have several members tested, and those tests were fairly difficult to get a hold of. The Fair Park has been very accommodating. They have been producing a fair amount of tests. But I think that would be, I'm going to defer that one to the experts with the county that have the specific numbers on who is testing and how many they are actually conducting.
Madam Mayor, I could follow up on a couple of points there.
Yes.
The, Dr. Moats, a couple of meetings ago, talked about the advantage of pool testing, and that is something now that the federal government or CDC has allowed. So that will, I think, help as you start going through the system to be able to test the results of multiple individuals at once. And if one of those batches is positive, then you go back and test the individuals. So that'll increase the capacity of testing. I think you mentioned 10 pool, but I think they permitted four. So, but that will expand capacity. And then Santa Maria's specific death rate, supporting what Chief Tuggle said about the trend, we had no additional deaths this last week. So each, I think for the city itself, we're at 18 or somewhere. So we've been, I think that might correspond also with what Chief Tuggle's saying, we're could be cautiously hopeful that we're on a positive trend. And then the testing, yeah, the testing overall, we heard from, I think, Sue Anderson a couple meetings ago, that the testing data that's provided to public health is the public health testing data, and the state data, I think, was separate. So, but, so it probably doesn't encompass all the testing that goes on here with the testing that public health is administering or overseeing.
Mr. Stowell, do you have the mortality rate for data for the state? Do you know that? I'm, okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Stowell?
That concludes our presentation or update for this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. The next, we have an appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title and start the, yeah, staff report?
Sure. The city council will consider making appointments to the block grants advisory committee, the library board of trustees, and the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Board. We'll start with the block grants advisory committee, which has five terms to fill, ending in July 2023. Applications were received from incumbents Esther Acosta and Georgina Duran-Kahn, and two new applications were received from Corey Armstrong and Isaac Veruman. Sarah Mustafa, previously appointed by Mayor Patino, has moved out of the area and did not reapply. Following the nominations, the appointments are to be made by Mayor Patino with ratification by the city council.
Okay, so Councilmember Cordero isn't here. Councilmember Moats, do you have a nomination?
And this is for the block grants?
Yes.
Yes, we're possible.
Okay. And I will go ahead and second that. Should we do it now, or put them all together? Okay.
And Madam Mayor, I would like to go ahead and appoint Georgina Duran-Kahn. In the last three years, she's only missed one meeting. She's an amazing, she's very dedicated, amazing lady. So I definitely want to keep her.
She is. Very, very bright woman, and-
Yes, she is. Oh, my gosh.
Very dedicated.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Soto?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make my appointment at a later time.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I will also make mine at a later date. So we have Councilmember Moats' nomination of Esther Acosta, and Councilmember Waterfield's nomination of Georgina Duran-Kahn, and I will second that. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
And Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And our final one is the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Board, which runs concurrently with the countywide library agreement each year from July through the following June. The mayor will have the opportunity to appoint one member for a term ending in July 2021. One application was received from incumbent Laura Selkyn, and Mayor Patino would make the appointment with ratification by the city council.
So I would like to make a motion to appoint Laura Selkyn to the library board of trustees.
I will second that.
Thank you. And I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And our final one is the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Board, which runs concurrently with the countywide library agreement each year from July through the following June. The mayor will have the opportunity to appoint one member for a term ending in July 2021. One application was received from incumbent Betty Gunn, and Mayor Patino would make the appointment with ratification by the city council.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to appoint Betty Gunn to the Santa Barbara County Library Advisory Committee.
Second.
Okay, I have a second. Any comments from the council? Any discussions? Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
And I want to thank everyone very much who volunteers for the boards and committees. It takes a lot of work and effort, and it's so appreciated. Next, we have a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will conduct a public hearing to consider protests to the proposed assessments for the city's annual weed abatement program to be collected as part of the 2020-21 property tax rolls.
And the staff report is to be made by our city attorney, Mr. Watson.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as the councils were pursuant to resolution 2019, this code division provided owners of 167 properties with an abatement letter. I am very pleased to advise you that of that, 166 cleaned up their property.
Wow.
So the code division is doing good, at least with cleaning up weeds, and we have one remaining, which is APN 1170404. 15,000 square feet was abated for a total cost of $276.94. And I would recommend that the council adopt the resolution.
Thank you very much. Good work. Good work, code compliance people. So-
No discussion. Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution.
Okay, I need to see if there was any request. Yeah. Any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
No written requests? Okay. So I'll bring it back to the council. You can make the motion.
Make a motion to adopt resolution confirming the weed abatement costs for assessment purposes by the city attorney code enforcement division regarding APN 11704004.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And any further discussion on the resolution? If not, the confirm the weed abatement costs for the assessment purposes. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next, we have another public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider a recommendation of the planning commission to approve a supplemental environmental impact report, a specific plan amendment, and a general plan land use amendment and zone change for the Jones- and zone change for the Jones-Romer family to rezone a 37.6 acre site located at Highway 101 and East Seaward Avenue.
Staff report is to be made by senior planner, Mr. Albro.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The project site is the last remaining undeveloped portion of the 1994 Rivergate Romer specific plan located at the northern boundary of the city, adjacent to US Highway 101 and the Santa Maria River. The specific, specific plan covers approximately 194 acres, and except for this particular project site, the specific plan has been built out. The project site is approximately 37 acres, and as I mentioned before, is bounded by Broadway, Highway 135 interchange to the northwest, US Highway 101 to the west, the Santa Maria River levee to the northeast, and the River Oaks residential subdivision to the east. South of the project is Borges Road and Jim May Park. So here's an enlarged version, or view of the specific project site. This is the project parcel. And the proposal, let me just step back, here's a view looking towards the east, and you can see the Santa Maria River levee and also the escarpment on the far side of the river. Here's a view on the top left is looking south, and then the right-hand side picture is looking generally southwest. And you can see the development on the other side, on the west side of Highway 101. And finally, here's a view from the current termination of Seward Avenue. It's very difficult to see in this picture, but if you look closely above the end sign there in the lower port, portion of the picture, the Broadway northbound interchange ramp is visible in the distance. And you can see the levee on the right-hand side of the photograph. So the proposal is to modify the current land use and zoning designation, which involves a general plan amendment, a zoning change, and a specific plan amendment. Currently, the site is primarily community commercial with a C2 zoning. On the north-hand side, closest to the interchange, there exists freeway service designation, and that's approximately two acres. And then the orange on the east and south boundaries of the C2 is zoned HDR, excuse me, designated HDR with a PDR3, high-density residential zoning. The proposal is to remove the freeway service designation, and that's two acres, and the 5.5 acres of the high-density residential. I'll go back to the existing. You can see the north and the south boundaries of the project. This is what the applicant is requesting, to make the entire project PDC2. So that would result in approximately 29 and a half acres of PDC2. Just for the, the council's information, the planning commission recommended approval of this change at their meeting in June. The output had a number of different goals for the project, obviously removing the R3 designation. They cited the difficulty of the odd shape and limited acreage of that R3 designation in terms of actually getting a high-density residential project on a parcel that shape and size. They'd also like to maximize the commercial area, and this is not only in terms of the regional nature of the commercial in that location, but also to serve the, what is currently underserved northeast area of the city by providing them with some commercial opportunities, emphasizing the northern gateway to the city with high-quality commercial. And then finally, the increased flexibility of the C2 zone compared to the freeway service zone. The freeway service zone has very limited uses that are allowed or even conditionally allowed, whereas the C2 zone is our most flexible and accommodating commercial zone. And again, the planning commission recommended that the council approve these changes at their June 17 meeting. So because the original specific plan was approved in 1994, and the changes to the community and the changes to state law since that time, we had to relook at environmental or potential environmental impacts of this project change. Some of the items that were looked at was the traffic, not only at the interchange, but of caused by the project for the surrounding neighborhood, housing supply and the issues surrounding removing that R3, greenhouse gas emissions, which is a new subject that CEQA mandates we address when we look at projects, and then also tribal cultural resources, which is also a new topic. So this supplemental EIR was routed for public comment. We did receive comments from a number of agencies. The most significant comment was from Caltrans, and that comment did take quite a bit of time and negotiation with Caltrans by not only the property owner, the applicant, our environmental consultant, and ourselves to essentially have Caltrans change their mind about what they had been indicating, which was that this project was now seen as triggering the need for the interchange, which we felt was unreasonable.
Unreasonable?
Unreasonable, yes. So along with the supplemental EIR, a mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been provided. There was one impact, which was deemed to be significant and unavoidable, and in those situations, the council has the option of making a statement of overriding consideration, and staff recommends the council make that statement. And that statement, along with the mitigation monitoring plan and the CEQA findings, are all part of the environmental resolution that has been provided to the council this evening. And speaking of the resolution, we have a number of actions that the council is looking at taking this evening. First, as I mentioned, the environmental resolution and its associated documents. The second is a resolution amending the city's general plan land use map. The third is an ordinance that the council will be introducing and then continuing to a future meeting to amend our city zoning map. The fourth is a resolution amending the specific plan land use provisions. And the final is an ordinance introduced to amend the specific plan zoning provisions. Those are all provided to the council, and that concludes staff's presentation. So if there's any question, I'd be happy to take.
Ms. Waterfield?
Yep. Frank, go over what you, what kind of statement you want the council to make in regards to what you were just.
Certainly. As I mentioned, the environmental report identified one potential impact that even though mitigations were applied, it still will be considered significant. In other words, the mitigations that are proposed aren't enough to bring it down to a level where there won't be any impact. And that has to do with operational air quality. So in other words, when the project is developed, the operation of the project, the traffic, whatever other mechanical devices are on the buildings and so forth, will result in excessive air quality emissions, which will have an air quality impact. And then, as I say, those have been reduced by the mitigations included, but not to a point where there is no impact. Therefore, CEQA provides that a decision-making body can make this statement saying that even though there is this impact, the value of the project to the community and the area is more important than that one impact.
Did we have to do that for the ENOS project?
I do not know that question, or that answer, I'm not aware.
I don't think so.
Because that's the same, almost the same amount of acreage that was developed, and yet we put a lot more people in there, both apartment-wise and shopping-wise and now school-wise, and so I'm just curious if that was something that we had to do there, too.
I, I just don't know that answer.
Did you know that, Ryan?
I, I don't think so, but then.
Yeah.
Not sure. Yeah, I don't think so.
I just wondered what triggered that, yeah.
True. And for the council's information, we do have our environmental consultants from RINCON, Rich Dalton and Matt, Matty Magers, are available to answer more specific questions about this particular environmental document.
Were they involved in the ENOS one? Do you know?
Yeah. Let me look.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ryan.
Okay. Ms. Soto?
Yeah, can you clarify for me if the significant impact, is that destroying the development phase, is that even then after?
The impact is operational, so it's going to be from the operation of whatever gets developed on this site. I would like to just reiterate to the council that this project is only a land use and zoning change. We don't have a specific development plan at this point in time. But in order to analyze the project for CEQA, we had to make assumptions about what a reasonable development with that land use designation would be, and that's what these impacts and mitigations are based upon. That way, when future projects come to us, and they will require a planned development permit, if those projects don't exceed what those assumptions were in terms of the amount of development, the square footage, that sort of thing, there would be no need to do any further environmental work when those future projects come to us.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thinking, Madam Mayor, can you explain to me how, if, if, if the changing, if this zoning change, how it will impact the development of the interchange project?
My understanding from working with our engineering staff and also from the comments from Caltrans that we received, is this change should not have any impact regarding the design or the construction of that interchange project. My understanding is that the final design of what that interchange might look like has not yet been decided, and that's going to be something that city staff will be working with Caltrans on. However, the, the 1994 specific plan established open space, and if I move back through the slides here, so the green within the yellow polygon to the north near the Broadway interchange, that green area was open space specifically designated and established to accommodate the future interchange. And that open space boundary is going to be remaining the same. There's no changes, it's not reducing, there's no encroachment to that. So our conclusion is that it should not have any effect that the existing specific plan doesn't already have on that interchange, and my understanding is that there is none.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Soto?
Thank you. My question is, so by, by us voting on the zoning change, so that wouldn't have any impact on the, again, the, the interchange project? Like, for instance, I, I saw from the power, from the presentation or from what was on our binder, that it went straight into Seward Avenue.
Correct.
And so do we have any say on that by, as we're looking at the zoning change?
The, the alignment of Seward and the idea that Seward would eventually connect to Broadway is not only, it was part of the original 1994 specific plan document, and it's also part of our circulation element, our city circulation element. That's where that idea got established. It's truly independent of this project. This project, like any other development, will, when it comes for actual physical development, will be charged fees that help contribute to the funding of those projects. But this project itself is not driving that interchange, and it's not driving the design, and it's not driving the extension of Seward, particularly the idea that it would cross the freeway onto Broadway. That's going to be an independent project, subject to the review through Caltrans and work between our engineering division and Caltrans.
Thank you.
We do, we do have some slides that show the concept.
We'll have to go on them.
I'm sorry.
Let me see if I can get it back, Ray.
Okay.
Was it toward the end?
Yeah.
They're hidden.
Oh.
See, you have to right-click and hit them hide. If you, if you care to look at them, it's just the interchange.
These are concepts that were part of earlier presentations and proposals to Caltrans.
Yeah, that doesn't do this project.
Not necessarily, no. It, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Hold on, the last one. Air quality and some cable interception stuff.
Okay, so yes, on the ENOS, Ryan's confirmed that there were actually four class one impacts, which are the unavoidable impacts where the council did make a finding that the project had more merits than the impacts.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Do we have the applicant here to speak?
Lori Tamer is on the line with us.
Okay.
Lori, are you there?
Lori?
Your little mother.
Hi, this is Lori Tamer with urban planning concept, and we appreciate the presentation that Frank Albro put together for this project. We've been working with him for about two years now through the environmental review process, as well as the specific plan process, and we understand that this project has gone all through to fill around toward the potential of investment, as a mission. The very people who understand the absolute design of the Broadway 101, you know, so it's connected to Seward Drive. What.
Excuse me, Lori, 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 you are sort of muffled, and so it's, you're not coming across real clear.
Okay. So as a part of the, 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 the work on this project, and we do not have any comments other than the responding questions that the council has asked.
Any questions of Mr. Tamer? Yeah.
I have.
Go ahead, Ms. Soto.
Thank you. I, in regards to the air quality concerns, are we, are, how are we planning to mitigate that? And I know that we don't have a specific project in front of us to approve, but are we going to be promoting more transit services, alternative transportation? How is the quality of life for the residents in the northeast side of town going to be affected, especially when we're talking about air quality? And again, how are we mitigating that? And is there any way that we would be able to, as projects are coming before us, ensure that, again, transit services are, are better in that part of town and also encouraging alternative transportation that doesn't include getting air cars?
Thank you, council member. Yes, the air quality mitigations that are included are in the mitigation monitoring plan, and they are multifaceted. So one of the major components is a traffic demand management plan, and that plan will include pedestrian design of sidewalks and pathways, particularly through the parking lots, placement of park, parking lots and building entrances, so they. the parking lots, placement of park, parking lots and building entrances so they enhance pedestrian travel, bicycle facilities, including storage lockers, employee shower facilities, locker facilities, transit support, including transit passes or subsidies for retail employees, charging stations, van pool stations, carpool stations, and the encouragement of onsite services such as childcare, postal machines, a good mix of commercial uses to reduce travel and reduce vehicle miles traveled. One other thing I should mention that part of this proposal includes, by changing the full area to a C2 zone, that allows future applicants to apply for mixed use on that C2 property. And so there is the potential that residential could be part of this development where the freeway service zone, you cannot use the mixed-use ordinance for that zone. There's some other air quality provisions in the mitigations, including greenhouse gas reductions, which goes to green building practices and low energy use, you know, equipment and materials and so forth. That will also aid with the reduction of the air quality impacts. But as we've mentioned, not to a point where they're no longer significant.
Thank you. Another question that I have in regards to the housing, and I know that Nurse Temora alluded to this. In the existing development potential plan that we have, if I understand this correctly, we have the capability of developing 102 high-density units. And with the proposed development potential plan, we have, there's an ability to develop up to 420 density units through mixed code use. Where did we find the space for all of those additional high-density units?
So that's a theoretical number, based on the square footage of commercial that was assumed for the environmental analysis. And looking at the mixed-use code, this site, because of its location, has to have at least 50% of the floor area used for the commercial, the base use. Therefore, the 49% of the floor area could be residential. So just a quick calculation based off of moderately sized apartment unit led to that number. We're not saying that that will happen, but it's a possibility that is enabled by the change in this specific plan.
And so as development projects are coming our way, that's something that we will have to keep in mind, correct?
That could be kept in mind. These development projects would be submitting a planned development permit application. There would be no requirement that there be residential on this property. It's just the opportunity that residential could be developed on this site.
And that's a concern that I have. I mean, given that we are seeing housing shortages across the state of California, the fact that there is no guarantee that whether it's the current council at that time, when they're reviewing these projects, that what is, I mean, I guess my concern is that there isn't, there won't be a requirement from, of developers to ensure mixed use. So there's no guarantee that we're really going to be able to mitigate the impacts of housing.
Well, the other aspect of this is that even with an R3 designation, there's no guarantee that that property would be used for housing. The other component of that is that through our housing element, we are required to identify available sites for development. And this particular parcel, because of its, one, because of its shape and its location adjacent to the levy, essentially state law did not even permit us to include that in our available sites. So that is one other reason why this project was supported by staff, because it didn't result in a reduction of our housing element, available sites, in our efforts to meet our RENA, our housing needs allotment. But yes, you're correct, there is no mandate that mixed use happen on this site and that residential occur on this site.
Dr. Moats?
Yeah, Mr. Alpera, two questions. When we're talking about putting housing in here, we're talking about apartments on the second floor and commercial on the first floor?
There is no requirement in our mixed-use ordinance that mixed use be vertical. It can be horizontal. I believe most, if not all, of the mixed-use ordinance projects that we've seen have been horizontal, where you have uses adjacent to each other, not on top of each other. It's an option open to future developers and property owners, how they would like to see that.
So there could be some freestanding, single-family homes mixed in here?
I believe, well, let me, I am not certain that the single-family residential, it can be applied to the C2 as a mixed use.
Or duplexes or apartment complexes.
Correct, medium-density and high-density, yes, that would be a possibility.
Okay, my second question is, if the original plan, you have residential backing up to the pre-existing residential, and now we're going to switch that to commercial, what are the consequences of having 18-wheelers rolling behind those pre-existing homes to service the commercial enterprises that would be going in? Are there unpleasant consequences of commercial zoning?
The current specific plan includes requirements for buffering adjacent to the commercial uses, in terms of landscaping setbacks and that sort of thing. Additionally, each project that comes to the city will be subject to a planned development permit. If there are impacts that are identified as causing adverse impacts to those adjacent residential units, that's an opportunity where SEQA state law says we can reopen the environmental analysis and look to see if there are impacts, and if there are, add further mitigations. Or conversely, an applicant can propose a project with adequate buffering, adequate separation, not putting a drive aisle or a supply drive aisle adjacent to the residential, and configuring it in such a way to where the residential gets the lowest impact exposure possible. It's up to the applicant to propose a plan to us, and we have the ability through the planned development permit process to deny if we think it's going to be an adverse impact or request changes through conditions.
Yeah, so really good answer, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Soto?
How will the zoning change impact the Senate bill that we just learned about during our study session last week, SB 743?
Vehicle miles traveled? That is, because we had started this project so much earlier, this environmental study touches on vehicles' miles traveled, but still uses the city standard of LOS to determine traffic impacts. Again, if in the future, when an actual development project comes to us, and there's something so significant about potential impacts, particularly if it deals with vehicle miles traveled, there's always the opportunity the city can request additional environmental analysis.
Thank you. Madam Kirk, do we have any requests to speak or written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay. Any other questions, Mayor? Any other questions of Ms. Temora? Thank you, Mr. Alpera.
Thank you.
I do have one. What's the status update on the interchange plan?
The most recent information I've heard from engineering is that we have contracted with a firm to help us begin the design of that interchange, and that negotiations and meetings with Caltrans staff will be beginning soon. But I'm not sure what timeframe "soon" indicates. I believe within the next year.
And so essentially, like, once that interchange plan, or that interchange plan is in place, that's when projects will possibly be coming our way?
Possibly, and one of the things that Lori had mentioned during her brief statement was that this project is required to not develop until the interchange is under construction and we know what we have. Our staff's opinion is it's very unlikely any commercial developer will come to the site until that interchange is available. Otherwise, the site won't have the necessary ingress egress for customers to visit the site. We think it's not, it's something that's going to just happen because of that, that developers will wait. But we've included that kind of language in the documents and in the resolutions that those kind of developments, actual development of the land, will need to wait until that interchange is finalized and in process of being constructed.
Remember Union Valley Parkway?
Yeah, the most recent construction schedule for the interchange is to start construction in 2024. That could slip, though, with the additional planning and with COVID and everything else.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I'll bring this item back to the council for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I can go ahead and make a motion, but did we, do we have public comment? Did you ask for a public comment?
Yeah, I did already.
Okay, okay. Shall I make it all in one motion, or do you want me to do? Okay. Great.
I think it would be better to have all three as separate motions, just in the event that somebody challenged any specific one.
So do them individually, then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so all five of them individually? Okay. Where do you, where would you like me to insert the language in regard to the EIR? It's in there? Okay, okay, fantastic. Okay, item number one, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution certifying a supplemental environmental impact report, a statement of overriding considerations and a mitigation monitoring programs for the proposed project.
Second.
Okay, that's recommending, that's the number one.
That's the number one, yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Madam Kirk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Sorry. Can we discuss? I'm sorry. Is it too late?
We have a motion already, and we have a motion in a second.
So we can discuss the motion that's in place?
Okay.
Yeah, I think my, and maybe you often help me think this through. I'm just, I keep thinking about how this is going to impact the quality of life for the residents on the northeast side. I mean, on one hand, I'm like, great, you know, it's like a food desert in that part of town. There's, it's hard for them to go to the grocery store without getting in their cars and driving across, you know, the overpass on Donovan. But at the same time, I wonder how that's going to impact traffic flow once even that interchange is there onto C Word. And I mean, from what I'm hearing, the interchange is completely independent from the zoning. So really, I mean, I can't really do much about that.
Do you think that maybe the interchange would have a better traffic flow going to the freeway for them as opposed of going through, it would take traffic out of the neighborhoods of getting to Donovan and then having to go on to either Broadway or to the 101? It'd just be a straight shot for C Word? You're taking a lot of cars off.
Right, and I, yeah, and I hear you're meaning of like, traffic flow and better for connectivity, connectivity from that part of town.
Because you have a neighborhood that has smaller streets, and so you're actually taking cars off the, off the street for them as well.
Unless they're going from like, east Donovan and then needing to turn into where the CHP office, and having to go through that whole residential site. But then would it be worth it for them to go through there than just going through the overpass and through the 101?
You're talking hypotheticals here, and there's not even a project.
Right, right. Right. Oh. Hey!
I guess you can. Absolutely.
Thank you. I think the project, it would open up and add to the flow of traffic. It would only for traffic to flow in and out of that area. Admittedly, I think there could be more cars, but you'd also have more access and for extra interest of the property itself. So I think, well, I think there might be an increase in traffic because of the homes and or commercial. There's also going to be an increase in interest and a way to get out of the area. So I think one versus the other, as you said, there are plenty, there's no project for us to blow on at that time, but the project comes forward, we all have an opportunity to take it for the transfer at that time, and an opportunity to take a look at and see whether or not the project is going to be too big or too complex for the area.
Okay.
We're ready. Do I just vote now?
Yes.
Aye.
Did you want to get Cordero's?
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number two, I make a motion to adopt a resolution amending the general planned land use policy map designations on 7.5 acres of a 37.6 acre site from freeway service FS and high-density residence HDR to community commercial CC land use classification.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, call the roll.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Madam Mayor? Aye.
Item number three, to make a motion, introduce an ordinance and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption rezoning 7.5 acres of a 37.6 acre site from SP P D F S specific plan, planned development freeway service, and SP P D R3 specific plan, planned development high-density residential, to SP P D F C2 specific plan, planned development freeway tower overlay, general commercial.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, call the roll.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Pizzino? Aye.
Item number four, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to amend the Rivergate Romer specific plan to be consistent with the amended general planned land use designation.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, call the roll.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
And Madam Mayor? Aye.
And final motion, number five, introduce an ordinance and continue to a future meeting for second reading and adoption, amending the Rivergate Romer specific plan to be consistent with the amended zoning designations.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Kirk, call the roll.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Moats?
Aye.
Councilmember Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Mayor Pizzino?
Aye.
Good evening, Councilmember Cordero.
Although I've been here, I just figured.
Well, that's the quickest you've ever been.
I just figured I'd make this thing worse than I did.
Oh, thank you. And next, we have a regular business item. Thank you, Mr. Alpera. Appreciate it. We have a regular business item. Madam Kirk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will review a framework for soliciting and selecting a development partner and proposal for the redevelopment of specific city-owned property in downtown Santa Maria. Santa Maria and provide further direction to city and chamber of commerce staff.
The staff report is to be made by community development director, Mr. Ainge. No? Or is he under? He's here, okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. We are here to present to you a framework for soliciting and selecting development opportunities on city-owned properties in downtown. The revitalization of Santa Maria's downtown remains an important and vital priority. We have a vision for vibrant downtown, one that will produce more jobs and housing, but also be a destination with dining and public space amenities. As you may know, last year, 2019, we issued a less formal notice of opportunity to inform developers of potential development opportunities on city-owned properties in downtown. This generated good discussions with interested parties, and based on the comments received, we believe we are in a position to issue a more refined and focused request or proposals. This has been a joint effort of city staff and the Chamber of Commerce. Glenn Morris, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, has prepared a presentation for tonight's meeting, and I will now turn the time over to Glenn after the presentation. Both Glenn and I will be available for questions.
Mr. Morris?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure again to be with you this evening and very excited to share with you the information we're going to go over this evening. As Mr. Ainge mentioned, we've been working for a while now to try to identify a methodology that allows to leverage city-owned assets to really jumpstart the revitalization of downtown, increasing investment, jobs in our community, and achieving goals the city has established. Let's go, this is just our agenda for the presentation, but let me just start, and Mr. Ainge mentioned this already. The council over a number of years has invested significant time and treasure in identifying a vision and a desire for the revitalization of our downtown core. The purpose of our presentation this evening, and really this process that we'd like your agreement to move forward on, is not to re-envision that, is not to relitigate the intent or the potential for downtown, but really rather to figure out how we actually activate and implement the vision that you and the community have set forward over the last several years through the downtown specific plan, the streetscape plan that was developed a couple of years ago, and as most, as recently as your goal-setting session in this last, what was it, in February? Seems like a lifetime ago now, but, you know, as you look at what's in the downtown specific plan, but also in your, in your council goals, there was a specific direction to finish the implementation, and so that's what we're here to do this evening. We talk about the assets that the city owns that could be leveraged to devote, to jumpstart this development. Specifically, we are talking about five parcels in the downtown owned by the city that are currently underdeveloped and could accommodate significantly more and higher and better uses. They are specifically the two parking areas on the east side of the Follis Building, directly between the Follis Building and Broadway. So those are the items number one and two on your map. Number three is the Central Plaza or Pearlman Park, which is on the northeast corner of the intersection of Broadway and Main. Section four is the southeast corner of that same intersection, and that's the small sunken plaza that is directly to the north of the Bank of America Building. And then number five is a small parcel on the northeast corner of Church and Lincoln. It's the far eastern edge of the parking lot where the community development building sits and directly across from the Heritage Square Building and the Maya Restaurant. So those are the five pieces of land that the city owns right in the heart of downtown that we believe are ripe for development and could be leveraged to partner with a developer and really jumpstart activity in our downtown. In addition to the land, the city does have other tools and incentives that it can bring. Many of these are already envisioned in the downtown specific plan. They were anticipated by the council when that plan was adopted, and, you know, they have been supplemented in recent years by the fact that most, four of those five parcels, all but the Pearlman Park site, are within the federally designated opportunity zone, which adds some additional incentives for investors. And so there are some additional tools that we can bring to the table, but really, the land is the key that really makes this interesting and possible. About a year, maybe a year and a half ago, the chamber and the city staff began circulating what we called a notice of opportunity. This was essentially a marketing exercise to try to identify potential interest on the part of developers and find out whether they might have some interest in working with the city to develop these parcels. Through that process, we identified a number of different developers that expressed interest. Many of them, though, indicated that in order to move forward, they needed further clarification around what the city's expectations might be, what the process would be that they would go through, and a timeline for making decisions. So that's really what we're here today to do, is to answer some of those questions. Following that, assuming that we get a positive response from you folks, we would then move to the distribution of a formal RFP process, which would be circulated through the development community, through the city and the chamber's channels to formally request that developers express interest in working with us on these, one or more of these parcels. That response would require them to define a project description and provide a concept plan. It would ask for them to describe the economic impact and how the project would match with city priorities and goals. It would ask them to demonstrate their capacity to finance, market, and complete the project, and it would ask them to demonstrate their readiness and the ability to begin the project within a determined timeframe. One of our goals in this process is not simply to start yet another multi-year planning exercise, but to get something coming out of the ground as fast as is feasibly possible. We are recommending a timeline that looks like what you see on the screen. If we're successful in meeting your approval, later this summer, we would begin to distribute that opportunity. We would ask if they would submit their proposals within about a two-month window. We would use about a month after that to review and score the different proposals that would be submitted. That would then go back to the downtown committee for their review and analysis, and ultimately a recommendation that we believe could come back to the council in the first quarter of 2021 to begin the process of identifying that project and the partner. I think it's important here to just point out that at that point, you would be, you would essentially be asked to approve the designation of a partner, and the conditions under which the land, the parcel or parcels that they would want to develop, would transfer from the city to the project. It would not, at that point, actually approve a final project, but that would be the beginning of the planning process that they would go through, like any other project, that would have to go through the planning commission and back to the council. So really, what we're talking about with this first phase of the process is identifying a preferred partner and the conditions under which the land would transfer from the city to the, to the project.
Excuse me, Ms. Waterfield has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, and what just triggered me, you said that we would transfer the land to the project. Explain what that means.
Well, so that's what we're going to talk about now, is how that would do, how that would happen. But ultimately, the intent would be either through a sale or a lease of the land, that the developer would gain control of the land and have the ability to then build on it.
But the developer, there wouldn't be, there should be provisions that the developer cannot sell the land if he gets control of the land?
And all of that's in the conditions that would be negotiated, and you would then approve when that project recommendation came back to the council. So how would we evaluate the projects that come forward, right? So if we're successful in this exercise, we would anticipate having multiple projects to consider, and we would go through a review process that would evaluate these kinds of areas. So first would be the fiscal benefits to the city. If the city is going to give up an asset, which it owns and controls today, namely the parcel of land, it ought to do so in a way that returns financial fiscal benefits to the city. Some of those, we believe, would come in the form of increased ongoing revenues to the city in the form of additional sales and use taxes. The properties would return to the tax roll because, if they were, if they were transferred to a private ownership, so there would be property tax receipts that would come forward. And the reality, as you all talked about in your budget discussions a month or so ago, those project, parcels today cost you money. You spend money every year to maintain, repair, light, secure, manage those pieces of land. That would come off of your books and would go on to the project developer's looks. We would also look to benefits to the community, right? So it's not just about making a little bit of a financial transaction, but we would want to see that there were benefits to the overall community as anticipated and hoped for in the downtown specific plan. Some of the things we would be looking for would be increased jobs, whether that's through retail or office projects that would come in as part of the development, as well as the construction jobs that would happen during the actual development, the potential for housing in the downtown, the overall attractiveness of the community and how our downtown is perceived, and the ability to, the part of the developer, to support and partner with existing uses and programs in the community in a way that really adds to the whole. We would also be evaluating the track record and capacity of the developers. We said earlier, we're not interested in having somebody do a project on paper that never actually gets built. So one of the things that we would task the review team to do would be to really look at, do they have a track record? Is this a developer that gets things built out of the ground? Once that kind of process is reviewed, and there's a scoring mechanism, and I'll show you kind of an initial concept for in just a moment, once that is done and there's a, you know, kind of a clear preferred partner, then we would look at what would the conditions be that would, that would make that transfer happen, right? So some of that is the pricing considerations, but then there might be others similar, some of which may be the point that Councilmember Waterfield brought up about how that transfer is done. Are there clawback opportunities for the city if the project doesn't perform? Are there restrictions on the deed about, you know, transferring it out and just flipping the land to somebody else? All of those kind of conditions would be negotiated with that preferred partner. The pricing conditions, I think it's important to recognize that we have, we have had the parcels appraised, so we know what their current market value is, or at least we knew what it was pre-COVID. We'll assume that it hasn't changed much. But we have a starting point based on an appraisal that was done a year ago. And then through that review process, there would be points essentially assigned by the review team for the direct financial benefits to the city, as well as points for achieving the goals that the city has identified, and those points would transfer, translate into potential reductions from that kind of retail price, turning this into a true incentive opportunity for the city. So what are the next steps that we would go through? So what we've done so far is we've got, we've been working on this package and presentation. We have shared this with the downtown committee, and they have given us feedback and recommended that we move forward and bring this to you. So tonight, we're here with, to share this information with the city council and get your feedback and direction. Following that, we would anticipate moving forward with the distribution of this opportunity to the development community. I mentioned that there's a review panel, if you will, a scoring team that would be impaneled to review those proposals and assign the scores and help determine who the city wants to work with. We're recommending that that panel include the current four members of the downtown committee. In order to get some expertise on that from the development side, we would recommend adding four scores from our Economic Development Commission, and then there would be several of your senior executive team that would be asked to do that from the staff perspective as well. Those folks would then, using a form that looks something similar to what you see on the screen, would go through the proposals and actually score them. Those scores would then translate into, and ultimately, a recommendation and a model that would help to determine the pricing and other conditions under which the land would be made available to the developer to complete the project. With that, Mayor, I would stop and answer any questions that you or members of the council may have.
Any questions of the council? Ms. Soto?
Yeah, Mr. Morris, can you go back to the, that fault, that, who of that one? The one, who's going to be part of the committee, the scoring committee?
I'm sorry, Karen.
The scoring committee?
Oh, yeah, right there.
Thank you. That was it. I just wanted to take it, I missed that.
Dr. Holmes?
Yeah, Mr. Morris, I'm kind of curious as to what you think would be good for the city. We talking about two-story buildings, three-story buildings? We talking about commercial or residential or mixed use? What do you envision would be good?
Well, your downtown specific plan envisions all of those, and I think that, you know, again, as I said, we're not here to try to draw a new picture. I think the community has done great work in identifying what it wants. It's in that plan. What we're trying to do is figure out how do we get somebody to come in and build it for us. So all of the things that you just talked about are what is anticipated and called for in the downtown specific plan.
Ms. Waterfield?
So say we have a developer that comes in and says, this is something that I am interested in. What would be our incentive to tell him that he would, you know, take a good, hard look at it, this is what we have to offer? How would that conversation go?
So, yeah, that's exactly the conversation we want to have, right? So we're going to put this out and say, the city is interested in finding a partner, and what the city can bring to that partnership, really, the real asset is the land, right? You own outright and control some very key parcels of land, and so that's the off, right? If you have the right idea, the city is willing to put some land into the deal and build a partnership, right? They would then have to come back to the city and say, in exchange for that land, here's what we think we could build and bring to the community. And then that review process would happen, and, you know, what is that, about 13 different leaders in the community would have to go through and score that and say, yeah, we think this one, maybe there's three, right? We think this of the three is the one that best achieves the goals we've set as a community and brings the best overall package to the community. They would then recommend that that be our partner moving forward. Tom's team would then get involved in negotiating a contract that would, that would have all of those conditions that would be identified, you know, that would have to be met, all of the performance measures, all of those kinds of things would get negotiated, and then that whole package would come back to the city council.
Okay.
This group would have, would have the final say about, yes, we're going to move forward or...
Okay. How do, how do we investigate a developer to make sure that they are on the up and up? Because we're talking city property that we would be negotiating with it, and so...
You're asking about the Councilmember Waterfield through the mayor, so you're, yeah, you're asking about the particular scoring criteria.
Well, not, not, not the scoring criteria, but how do we investigate a developer before we even, you know, do we do that before we get into the scoring part of it? Because if, you know, if they're not worthy of it, then we just wasted our time scoring them.
When we look at it, it'll be, to your first question earlier, some of the criteria are, does it generate taxes, sales tax, property tax? Does it reduce our ongoing cost burden, so that's more money to the taxpayers? And then does it further the goals of the downtown specific plan? So those are key things that we'll be able to tell the residents that it's in the city's interest to partner with this particular developer, and that's, they're going to be ranked differently. And that's, they're going to be ranked differently. Some of them might generate a whole lot of hotel tax, some of them might generate a whole lot of property tax, some might have more parks or open space or whatever. And so those will all be things that we can weigh. And then one of the criterion is to look at, does the developer have a decent track record?
That's what I want to know.
Is, are they capable of doing it? And so there'll be a cursory view at that point of...
How do we do that? What does that process look like? Who does it? And is it more than one person doing that?
Madam Mayor, if I, if I may, you know, with respect to a multimillion dollar development, the players who would be capable of doing this are going to be readily available and readily vettable based on regular opportunities. Where have they built projects? What has been the experience by others? What has been the experience by those government agencies? Have they performed as necessary? Do they have the financial wherewithal and they will have to release certain documents and trade elements to us?
And that's, and that's what we would assume. That's exactly what we would assume out of a developer.
We won't be assuming it. If we're partnering with them, it will be part of the vetting process for them to proceed.
Absolutely.
And my expectation would be between the Finance Director, myself, and other experienced professionals that are directors here, we have not only the context, but the obligation to perform that before that is even brought forward as a project. Because that's, to me, and I had this discussion with Mr. Morris and the other members of the team, the financial ability and the construction capability of an, of a partner is paramount, because to answer your question earlier, we would have a clawback provision on the land, but we don't want it back, we want the project built. So the whole point is to come out of this with a proposal that dovetails the community's needs, the ability of the developer to create it and get a return on investment and bring that to council for an ultimate decision.
Okay, and you say all the right things, but I just don't want to assume, because what we did last time, we assumed and we got fallacy. And we had all the financials, everything in order, and everything looked good on paper, but when it came to actuality, you see what we have.
Well, and there's a difference between anchor tenants and the project itself.
Pardon me?
There's a difference between anchor tenants and the project itself, and we would be looking at that too.
Perfect, perfect.
I think, yes.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is being discussed as if it were a new concept. As I recall, this was part of the original concept when the, when the mall on the east side went in and the, the actual, the bridge that's been negatively referred to as the Bridge to Nowhere was actually created so that those two east and west mall structures could be connected and you could go from one side of Broadway to the other without getting onto the roadway. So this is really not new. This is a resurrection of councils many, many years ago. And I think all of Ms. Waterfield's questions are valid and, and should be answered, but I, I don't think you're going to get someone in here that is going to be a fly-by-night person. For instance, just at Bass Pro decided that they wanted to put a store there, their name kind of says who they are and, and what their capabilities are, whereas if you get, you know, Roscoe's Economy Services, they're not going to be able to get in. So I, I think that this discussion is a bit premature until we have somebody to, to discuss. And when that comes, then we all have the opportunity to turn that down and, and really focus in and narrow in on, on the questions that the Councilwoman Waterfield is, is focused on, which I think are valid.
Mr. Cordero, I absolutely agree with you, but I think it's important to get these things out right now because we were deceived, to put it bluntly or lightly, but if you look across the street at the mall, and that was sold as the Panacea, and there were people in this town that, a lot of people in this town that didn't want it. There were businesses that went into the mall with this partner. And if you can imagine being a businessperson and having to accept a partner because the people sitting up here said, you're going to accept this person as a partner in business. And all those businesses went out. And I, and I think that, I just think we, you know, I want to say it too, because I know maybe it's premature, but I think people need to hear what we're thinking. And I just don't want to see us do, make that mistake again. And of course, we did own the parking structure that we finally paid off, what, two years ago? But I, I think it's important that people know how we feel about this and that we don't get sold a bill of goods and, and have buyer's remorse.
Ms. Soto?
I agree with you, Mayor, but until we have someone to discuss, then, then I, I don't know what more we can say. I think that the council, and probably you're not going to get it put any better than it was put by councilperson Waterfield, that we should be very concerned and with the history that you have with the council and having done it. I have the confidence that this council and the councils in the near future will, will, will not allow anything like that to happen again.
Miss, thank you. Ms. Soto?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you for providing that context and that rich, interesting history of Santa Maria. But I think to Councilmember Waterfield's point, I completely understand the concern of making sure that whenever we're talking about, you know, getting into negotiations with a partner and possibly selling or long-term leasing our land, it's definitely important to have all of those kinks worked out. And I really appreciated that in the planning process, it literally, one of the points is that the developer demonstrates a track record and capacity for, for these types of, for developing in, in our parcels. And so I, I think I would be interested to learn more about exactly what that process would look like, to hopefully, hopefully ease some of those concerns that Councilmember Waterfield and from what I hear other councilmembers up here have. But I will say that I, being part of the Downtown Specific Committee along with Councilmember Waterfield and a couple of other commissioners, has been a really interesting process. And after having so much community input for the downtown specific plan, I, I mean, one of the things that I've always said has been, the city needs to be like the first one to invest in our downtown. And I think that this is, I'm, I'm really happy to hear that we are at least having these conversations about what the city is willing to put forward in order for us to start the downtown specific plan and see it come to fruition. Like, we need to be able to say as a city, you know, we're willing to invest in our downtown as well, and here, here is our plan to do so. But again, really making sure that we have a clear understanding of how we're going to be able to ensure that the developers have, have the capacity as we're in these, in these negotiations.
Yeah, Ms. Soto, I, I think that you raise a great point. Many cities, I think, put out a vision and then hope somebody comes along and agrees with them and wants to do the work. City of Santa Maria is in a really unique position because for whatever reason, you became landowner. And so you have that ability to incentivize and to be that first mover that demonstrates what can happen in the downtown. And I believe that if, if that's done well, that what you'll then see is you'll see people moving over and, and, you know, either reinvesting in property they already own in the downtown or somebody's going to want to acquire it so that they can, you know, get it up to speed and, and make some money on it as well. Councilmember Waterfield, I think, you know, the, what I would point out is, you know, we're going to ask those very questions in the original submission. They're going to have to tell us, this is what we've done. They're going to give us, you know, references. We're going to be able to see their, their track record. And again, then there's multiple points at which decision makers, the Downtown Committee, the city staff, the council itself, will have an ability to exercise your judgment and to be able to say, we, we trust this one, we think that the homework that the staff have brought to us gives us that confidence, we believe in the vision, and we're ready to move forward. Or you're not. And at that point, that would be a completely legitimate outcome, is to say, we went through the process and we didn't find what we were looking for, and so let's do something different, right? But I think at least in this, this gives us the opportunity to, to put something out there and, and see what we can bring to the community and then let folks like you and Councilmember Soto and the others on the Downtown Committee, you know, take your best shot at it and poke holes in it and, and see if it stands up to your standards.
You know, I know what we always talk about, because we've got 135 and 166, and I always tell people, have you ever gotten a chance to, to drive through Clovis? Because they have a state highway. And I would never have thought that they could do what they did with their downtown. But they've certainly have slowed the traffic down and they've got a lovely downtown and even for a block or two out from the downtown, they've done a great job. Thank you. Any other questions?
Dr. Moats?
I just wanted to say one thing involving the Pearlman Park. I mean, you know, the Pearlmans are lifelong Santa Maria people and they taught at Santa Maria High School, and the park's been memorialized after them. And so I think that rather than just having their name fade into oblivion when it's in a commercial enterprise, the city should give some consideration to renaming something else after them.
Something else after?
After the Pearlmans. Maybe the next park that comes up or a name change or a plaza or something like that.
While, while we were talking, I get, I did get a text from someone and said, please save Pearlman Park. So, so, so I'm sure there's going to be some resistance out there. I just, that's, yes.
So there's no motion? It's just a recommendation?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
In written correspondence?
No.
Okay, I'll bring this back to the council. Any further discussion and direction? I think staff probably heard us.
I think so.
Any other questions or anything? Good. Thank you. That was, that was great. And, and all of us want, you know, I don't know how long I started going to those focus groups and, and then all these, the way people wanted the downtown to look was really, really great and different people coming together, even at the, at the library, but we were meeting much, much earlier than that and to see what, what people want. So I think, I think it's really neat. Thank you. So I'll bring the next item will be a report by City Manager, Mr. Stillwell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. The next meeting of the City Council is August 4th, and we'll have the second reading of the Rivergate Romer zoning amendment and specific plan ordinance. And we have scheduled a presentation for PG&E about wildlife, wildfire safety plan and safety power shut-off program. So that's, that program PG&E has, when there's a fire risk, they turn off the power. So we want to make sure the council and our community is aware of that policy and what their practice will be in the upcoming fire season. And we anticipate having an additional COVID update as this pandemic continues to evolve. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Oral reports of council members? Dr. Moats?
Madam Mayor, I have no...
Thank you. Ms. Waterfield?
I have no report.
Ms. Soto?
I think it's a report. The Thursday, July 16th Planning Commission and City Council Study Session on SB 743.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did the Ben Hay Show after the last council meeting, received another COVID test, tested negative. And I'll be self-quarantining myself and family for a while as I was around some people that are not normally around. So I'll be getting another COVID test in the near future to make sure that things are still okay. And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cordero, you need to stay away from positive people. July 9th, I did the Bridge 2020 Introduction and Action Plan Telemeeting, did the weekly meeting of key leaders, Unifying Recovery Efforts Telemeeting, and then the legislative briefing regarding the COVID. Did the Rick Blameyer Show to give out more information about what's going on in the city with COVID. On July 16th, I attended the SB CAG Monthly Board Meeting and the weekly meeting of key leaders, Unifying Recovery Efforts, and the Planning Commission Council Study Session on State Law SB 743. Did the legislative briefing call on COVID Telemeeting. July 17th, the legislative briefing with COVID Telemeeting. After a while, they just all blur together. And that, early, late morning, Ms. Waterfield and I did the honoring the hometown heroes on South College Drive.
That was so much fun.
What a great, that was so great. Oh, on July 18th, I went to the Boys and Girls Club and Gloria Molina, that was supervisor down in, in Los Angeles, came up and she and a group of women in the Los Angeles area make all these masks. And they brought up a bunch of masks for the kids at the Boys and Girls Club, and they made children's masks as well as adult masks. And they were really, really nice. And it was so, it was just so nice that they did that. She has a sister that lives here in Santa Maria, and so they, the three of them came over and brought the masks over to the Boys and Girls Club.
Did you get one?
I didn't get one. I was, it felt like a little selfish to get a mask when other people could use it. And let's see, I went to the Paul Nelson opening yesterday and it was today instead.
No, they opened, yes, I mean, they opened.
They didn't, they didn't, they opened today. But, but it wasn't that I got, I got my, my calendar wrong, it was that the, something was, was wrong with the pumps and the, anyway, it was a technical problem. And, and I guess that is it. Any other comments from?
Speaking of calendars...
Yes.
The Outlook calendar is just horrible. So I'm showing, I've got two calendars now that I'm trying to handle. And so it's just back and forth, but I can't change the center. It's just something you have to get used to.
Okay, if there's something else for the council, this meeting is adjourned.